Good morning, everyone, and welcome to the Jackson County Board of Supervisors meeting for Tuesday, April eleventh, two thousand and twenty-three. And what a beautiful day we have. So, um, Todd said he was gonna stop in for a minute, but I don't see him yet. So, uh, any other visitors or citizens want to approach the board? If not, we'll bump right down to Mike Griffin and Bruce Fisher.
Morning, gentlemen.
I've been here before, but I don't think you guys have met Bruce so far until we get the new board supervised.
Oh.
He's the chairman of the Jackson County. Last time he. Yeah, he's he's the chairman of the board for the Jackson County Energy District. He's also a guy that is actually doing the grants and stuff like that. So he's got better information than I've been able. And so we'd like to just kind of update you on what the stuff is now, especially for the two new new people.
Thanks, Mike. If I might, I thought I'd spend a minute for two new members to orient you a little bit more to the Jackson County Energy District. We're a not-for-profit organization. We've been around for just about four years now. Our focus really is on economic development in Jackson County and marrying that up with uh, energy efficiency initiatives. We're trying to help our people spend less money on energy and also promoting uh, clean locally-owned energy as a driver for jobs and and economic prosperity. So, um, we have a board of about nine members. Mike and I are are a couple of them, and we, I guess, tried to engineer a relationship with the supervisors where we can be in a position to offer you gratis consulting regarding energy-related issues. So that's why we're here today and hoping to fund the project as well that we're working on. Um, I wanted to kind of, uh, you weren't here when we started this project in terms of talking about something. I want to give you a bit of background. We did a preliminary RFP probably about eight months ago where we asked people, uh, asked a trusted vendor, what is it going to cost for us to put solar at the jail? And they came out with a proposal that was a non-committed proposal that gave us a good idea for cost, which was around eighty thousand, a little less than half of roughly eighty thousand dollars. Um, that number is is old now, of course. We don't know exactly where the market's gone. I think it's probably pretty stable. It could have gone down, it could have gone up, but we're gonna need eventually another RFP to kind of legitimize the vote and to ensure that we're on track with all your funding, financing and budgeting. Um, but assuming we have eighty thousand dollars uh, in in this project, we know that we have budgeted here in the county, I think around forty-eight thousand, forty-seven, forty-eight thousand. I didn't have the direct number when I was looking at it, but it's in the the mid to upper forties. Um, and we can also count on a thirty percent of project cost uh, direct payment from the federal government as part of the Investment Recovery Act. So we're gonna be able to get twenty-four thousand from the feds. That is assured, uh, which brings our total project cost down to fifty-six thousand dollars. Now, we're working on three other sources of funding, um, which under best case scenario, might bring the project down to fifteen thousand, but under more realistic scenarios, I think we're probably gonna be around forty thousand dollars for the project. So we're hoping we're gonna come in under budget, but it is dependent on these three additional sources of of financing, one of which is also an Investment Recovery Act program uh, that would give us ten percent of the project cost at eight thousand dollars on. That money, though, is finite. Um, the the federal direct payment from the IRA for the thirty percent, that's everybody who applies for that's gonna get it.
IRA.
Uh, IRA, Investment Recovery Act. Uh, and then, um, but for this one, there's, I think, one point, eight million dollars for Iowa or something like that allocated. And it's first come, first served. They're gonna start paying that out in the third quarter. But the estimates are from one consultant that I work with, it will probably get money in through the fourth quarter. But if if the project were to be consummated after that, that ten percent funding is probably not gonna be available to us.
You're talking fourth quarter of the year of this year?
Of this calendar year.
Calendar year, yes.
Yep. Um, something to note about both of these federal direct payments is we're not gonna have that money in hand when you buy the project. That's gonna be paid back to you later, probably after tax season uh, in a direct payment. So just to know, you know, we're gonna have to cover that funding for some period of time between when you buy the project and when you get that money back from the federal government. We have some ideas for how I can do that as well. Moonshine Grant, this is the big one where we've been working hard on. We can get up to twenty-five thousand dollars on it. I've been dancing with them for two months. Um, a lot of information back and forth. We still haven't got a yes or a no. Um, I'm hopeful, but not as hopeful as I was at one point. So, you know, this is, I would say, is kind of a fifty-fifty, in my opinion. Okay. The community direct grant program is probably almost a sure thing, but it's a lot of work to apply for it. And we can get another ten thousand or, excuse me, another ten percent, eight thousand dollars from that particular grant. Um, I can't access it on behalf of the county because I'm not a county employee and I don't have all of your kind of designations. Um, so if we want to apply for this, I'm gonna need to work with somebody on your staff or in the county that can, you know, register you as a county organization. Um, and I'm happy to do all the work, but it requires a lot of details, like what's your county budget annually? What's your cash reserves? Lots of financial stuff. This is a grant that McCoke has applied for previously understood and did receive. Um, it may have been a decade ago, um, but it's specifically related to uh, emergency operations. And and it's gonna be, in fact, I think for the Emergency Response Center that was put in some years ago, this was a grant that was used in the fun part of that. Um, so I believe we're gonna be in a good position to get this money if we can find a way to just work together and get all this detail put into the application. So looking at the potential project cost, best case scenario is fifteen grand. Um, most realistic scenario, and that is we get one of those two eight thousand dollar grants, um, is forty thousand dollars. So we're gonna come in, I think, under budget. Um, and that's that's our goal. Um, beyond, well, first of all, let me just ask you very questions before I talk about financing for a moment.
Yeah, I guess you talked about applying for this grant. I think we should probably try to do that. Listen, do you think that you or somebody in your office would have the time or the ability to help him write that or put the number, get the numbers for him?
I'd like to see them. I'd like to see the grant.
We can bring it up online and I can look at it. Yeah, and then decide whether that's feasible or I know we've tried this before and you know, I mean, we're a little skeptical about some of this federal money. I mean, we put a lot of time and effort in this and and received nothing.
Yeah.
Well, that that would be very important. For the moon here, but if there's eight thousand dollars available, yeah, they said, yeah, we should go try to get.
Yeah. And I did talk to the lady, the lady that directs the program. She was aware of McCoke, she was aware of the previous uh, uh, grant that we received some years ago, and she says this is a project that's favorably made for her. So I, I'm like, if we can do it, I'm ninety percent plus we're gonna get it.
Okay, well, you take a look and see your benefits. If you have capability, get with Lisa and we'll.
Okay, um, so then, you know, let's say that we're best case or realistic case scenario, forty thousand dollars. Um, you know, you can, you can fund that fully out of your budget amount, which is not gonna be an issue probably, but again, some of that money's gonna come back, come in a little bit later. Uh, so what you need to consider is at least some stopgap measure to finance the period during which you're waiting for the federal direct payment. Um, we are aware of a one point nine percent APR offering. If you do find the need to finance, I don't know if you need, if you have cash reserves, you can use that in the interim while you're waiting for the federal payment. Um, but that's something we need to figure out probably in the near term.
Is we finance it through Moonshot when we get a better chance of getting their twenty-five thousand dollar grant?
My instinct is yes, but they did not. I I asked another guy who works with Post. He says, I don't think it's a direct pay-to-play thing. Um, but he says there, you probably would have a slightly better chance. So, um, I wish I had a better shot at it. Mike and I were originally suspicious because they gave us this one point nine percent thing after we applied for the grant. And I'm like, this is kind of weird. Are they changing it up on us? And I talked to her and she says, no, no, it's just an additional service we provide. So we'll see. But it's a heck of a good rate.
And there wouldn't be any prepayment penalties, I don't suppose. No payoff penalties. So you could finance that payout in the next month.
Yeah, you could. So if if there's an interest in doing that, I would like to convey that to them um, because it might make a difference in us getting a grant.
We need to see an application, if you could please.
Will do. And I haven't seen that yet.
We have to run that through our bond council.
Okay, so I got two things to talk to you about, Lisa.
Yeah, thanks.
Because that was the agreement that I had with Steve Nadel, our bond counsel.
Okay. Perfect. Good. All right. So the last thing I wanted to talk about was just the timing of the project, and I don't know if you have any more details on the latest update and when that roof will be done.
I wonder if you've had some details on that.
I didn't pay for the meeting last week. I heard. And that they're talking about over the next month, month and a half to having most of the the roof up and running.
So it's supposed to be coming quicker than that's sooner than, and we have a good chance for third quarters. If we can get things moving.
They're talking about HVAC and everything, trying to add most of that up, the decking and all that done by the beginning of May.
Wow.
So.
That's very encouraging.
My question. If I understood, if I understood it right, the solar panels um, that they were initially, or you guys are looking at, they just sit on the roof? They're not actually fastened to the roof?
You know, I saw that proposal from one of our guys, and I I was not familiar with that method, but it came from an expert.
In the area, in the area that we live in or the era that we live in where we're hitting eighteen and seventeen and seventy and a hundred mile an hour winds, I feel reluctant putting in a hundred thousand dollars worth of solar panels that just sit there and rely on their weight.
Yeah.
As they, to me, seem like they're kind of a big sale.
Oh, yeah.
And I, you know, this is.
There are options, no doubt. Now, normally, um, they're attached to the roof with fasteners, so.
So now we went through this with the John engineer and John and with your people and said if there needs to be something extra put in that roof for anchoring points, and they said, no.
I would trust Rocky. Um, that's our consultant that works with, uh, that has worked with with John and and gone back and forth with with him. So I trust him, but it was a different approach than what I was accustomed to. But I've never been on a larger scale commercial.
He's gonna put the sandbags on him? Is that what he's, Rocky's gonna do? He's gonna put the sandbag on him?
I heard something about concrete, so I don't know. But there are ways to do that, and I'm gonna guess that your, the different quotes we get from the RFP will give us much more insight into that, and I.
Well, we're getting a narrow window of trying to make sure we have fasteners in the roof. And.
Well, they told us not, we didn't need them.
Yeah, they did. Yeah. So I I would trust.
Are you tailing that? Is that?
I just see them being like the, well, ones that are the feedlot sheds where if you watch these straight line winds, them are the things that are getting taken out or.
I have seen many solar panels around. I ain't seen one of them that just sit on the ground.
Oh, no, not on the ground for sure.
So what's the difference between that and a roof?
Well, I don't know. I mean, honestly, I, you're you're not talking to an installation.
No, that's, that's a question I have because I'm just like.
Well, I tell you what, I'll go back to Rocky, who I talked to quite a bit, and just verify that fact and ask him if that's a standard approach? Or is that something that he's adapting to our construction method or something?
I'd almost like him to sit in that shed right there and and assure us because I'm like, I have yet to see a solar panel.
Well, you're not gonna get to that point till you get an RFP. I mean, we need to get, regardless, we need to get an RFP, so it's all right.
Well, I wanna, I know there's another meeting coming up here in about a week itself. So we could know more when we're sitting on that timeline for sure by then.
That's great.
But they're talking about beginning to mid-May having the roof up decking up. Um, that was talking about processes with the, and he's been with the air conditioners and stuff, so.
I will try to get back to you before that meet.
Well, I I won't be here. I'll try to get, I'm leaving.
I mean, but we can write them an email and say Rocky backs up the the.
Well, yeah, I can get that for sure, but ultimately, it's gonna come down to the installer's choice of of fastener. And you're gonna be able to make that decision in terms of cost and benefit. Because we're gonna get, I'm sure, at least three and maybe half a dozen proposals. Um, and that brings me to the last point. If we're looking at maybe May, you know, we need to get an RFP out yesterday. Um, I I would thought we were talking October, November, last time we were, I was here. So they're moving much more quickly.
We actually, we actually talked when we talked the last time, we talked the roof like two months.
That's right. When I was here in the five.
I would get your RFP.
That's awesome. Um, well, we have an RFP draft. Um, I would submit it to you and to your attorney then for their review. And uh, I think we'd want to move more co- more quickly than not. Okay. Any other questions? I don't think so.
Well, we should go over because we we explained what the solar was that we got bid, the ballpark bid is only seventy percent of the the projected needs, not a hundred percent.
No, that's true. That's true. It's not gonna cover a hundred percent of your, of your electrical usage, but it will be happy. And I should mention, the kind of numbers we're looking at here, we're gonna have an annual ROI uh, return on investment of this project. It's probably gonna be fifty percent. It's gonna be incredible as we get a shot on the arms for the for the county's finances.
But because you're in the McCoke, uh, municipal deal, as they won't let you put in a hundred percent solar. But when we 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 classed it all out, and I haven't, haven't expressed that to you guys since you you got uh in here and elected. So the eighty thousand dollars is for like seventy percent of the electricity, not like Hurstville's a hundred percent.
Yeah.
Maybe still over twenty-five years or over three hundred thousand dollars projected. But we just want to be clear on that because I don't.
Still gonna get electric bill every year for that detail, but it's gonna be a lot less than it would otherwise.
But it depends on the utility you're with, just like Mike. I know you looked into it out to your house and he's on REC out there, and then it's not, it's not, because they won't let you um, build up credits and stuff like that. But I just want to go back over that because I hadn't been clear on that before.
Okay.
Thank you.
Right. Yeah, thanks, everybody. Thanks, guys.
Yep.
Yeah, I would proceed with your RFP. Well, anyone else get Todd's available or? Good morning.
Hello.
Mr. Guy. Todd Kenny, Mr. Todd Kenny or county engineer?
Uh, yeah, actually, I don't have anything for your agenda. Uh, but I wanted to visit you real quick about uh, schedule. I leave this Friday for the National Association of County Engineers Conference. Uh, I come back the following Friday, so fourteen through the twenty-first. You know, I'll have my laptop and I'll be responding to emails and all that, but if you try to get hold of me by phones or the likely, I'll have my rigor, so whenever I see it or get it, I'll come back, so. There'll be meeting, next session meetings or whatever, so, um. Upcoming training stuff, we're gonna do our first uh little training with the uh theater operators, lead men, truck drivers out of, around the McCoke area. Because the plan is we'll start doing our first round of um retrieving and re-rocking. Uh, we got that set up for April twenty-fifth. So we'll do that little classroom training and then go out on the field and kind of just have them start using it, kind of everybody get on the same page with the finished product should look like. That'll just be the retrieval part, and then we'll have another one of those when we actually get ready to start blading the material on the road, compacting and all that, because we still need to get our rollers. The rollers are not in, but it's my understanding they'll be in by uh, sometime next week, hopefully, so. Um, and then I'm gonna have uh the local technical assistance program and L-TAP C-Tree people are gonna come in and do a motivator training, uh, trying to get that set up for May thirty-first, so that'll be for all the operators too. Um, and then.
Which amounts to like going to a site somewhere or or?
So there's, we're gonna do the, what they call the two-day class where they do one day, it's all classroom training where they just talk about the machine, how to operate it, you know, uh, road drainage, they just cover the full A and C kind of about gravel road maintenance. And then the second day is the where they have an operator, experienced operator on the ground. You're like in the field, like field training, basically.
Our experience operator or theirs?
Theirs, okay, yeah.
Like with one of our machines?
Uh.
With one of our machines?
They got our operator in our, it's here, they can hear, yeah, so.
Any chance they could, you could talk to the one dealership that tried to get us to buy a, what was it, Kamatsu Road Grader? What was that one that was cheaper?
It was Kamatsu, yeah.
Kamatsu, is any chance they could show up with one of their demos or something so we could get a taste of it? If you're gonna have all the road grader operators together.
I would not do it for the training because I want them to operate a machine they know how to operate. But so when they're out training on how to use a machine, I want them to be driving the machine that they know how to use. But once, once that training's done, then I would probably bring in a machine where they could kind of come in and put it through, through its basis. Yeah, so, but I wouldn't want to do it for the training. I wouldn't want them to have to figure out new controls and then try and develop skill with with the actual field training guy there, you know, so it would, it would I would want them in a machine they're comfortable, already comfortable operating for that, so. Um, and then, oh, and then Thursday morning, we're gonna be doing an interview for the assistance to the engineers position. Said one person apply and that guy didn't come in, didn't, I talked to him on the phone, he's gonna come in and talk to it, like he, for whatever reason, it didn't happen and didn't apply, so I, we'll see. But we do have one person that, um, seems to meet the minimum qualifications to order an interview, so.
Cool. Keep, keep looking.
All right, that's it. Thanks.
I had some good comments about the roads are drying up and a little better shape and, you know.
The weather helps.
You can pass it along.
Look at, thanks.
Yeah, thanks, Todd. Okay. Um, I don't see Marty here. Um, Lisa? Are you?
Um.
Is is there someone else here that wants to approach the board?
You have an open meeting at ten, right?
That's the, for the budget here?
Yeah. Yeah, that's scheduled for ten, yeah.
All right. And I have quite a bit of stuff, that's why.
Luann?
If you want to be awake, yeah.
I just, you just, or the calendar, so I can do that.
Good morning.
Morning.
Okay, calendar for this week. Four o'clock this afternoon, I still tentatively have a McCoke River Watershed Management Authority Executive Meeting on, for Zoom, for Don. Tomorrow at nine AM on K-M-A-Q's Just Talk is Mike's turn to be heard. Ten o'clock tomorrow morning is a zero to five and sixty minutes meeting by Zoom for Nin and and Jack attends there as well. And at six thirty Wednesday night, I tend to have a municipal week meeting. No, okay. Yep, then confirmed that yet, so, okay, cross that out. Thursday, April thirteenth at ten AM is an Iowa DHS Council meeting for Jack. And at noon is a Jackson County Area Tourism Association meeting.
So, yeah, you guys are more welcome if you're around or zoom in for them. I just sat in on them once in a while if I was home available, so it's not like I'm the designated representative for them, but I'll sit in and listen once in a while.
They include the agenda and the minutes and everything to work back it basically in the email that they send, so that's all I'm connected to your, to the calendar events, yeah. Thursday, April fourteenth, I will be out of the office that day. But at ten, ten AM is a seven judicial department corrections meeting in Devonport for Nin. Friday. I guess on Thursday.
You did.
Okay, sorry about that.
The office on Friday, you'll be on the office.
Friday, uh, if Friday, April fourteenth, I have an appointment I have to do, so. Um, seven judicial meeting is at ten, but if you're on the evaluation committee, and I wasn't sure if you were, then that's at nine thirty. Um, eleven o'clock that day, um, tentatively is an ISAC legislative update call on Zoom for Mike. At noon is an ECI grants meeting in Dubuque, also for Mike. I'm not sure what all that is, but it could come up several different grants, I think. And at two o'clock on Friday is, um, the seven judicial mental health um, court graduation ceremony in Devonport, Reviseo, and I put Nin's name on that. I didn't know if anybody else wanted to sort of that or not. Monday, April seventeenth, um, at seven thirty AM is tentatively an early childhood Iowa executive meeting, meeting, um, into which for Nin. Um, one o'clock on Monday is Waste Authority Jackson County meeting for Mike, and that, I think, is downstairs.
Mm-hmm.
Um, one o'clock also is tentatively a children's advisory committee meeting in Devonport for Jack. And at two o'clock is the regional advisory committee meeting in Devonport for Jack. At three o'clock, with, on Monday, is the regional governing board meeting um, in Devonport for Nin and Jack, and I still have that as tentative, but I've been talking about it, so I'm sure that's gonna happen. Six o'clock Monday night is zoning commission meeting for any of you that want to attend that. Seven o'clock that night is Together We Build meeting for any of you that want to attend that, and I think Nin goes to that, she's on that committee, so. Our next regular meeting will be Tuesday, April eighteenth at nine AM. At two o'clock that afternoon is a Mississippi Valley Workforce CEO meeting by Zoom for Don. No driving that night, but. Um, and five o'clock is a conservation board meeting in Hurstville for any of you that want to attend that. And at six o'clock, I tend to have the Jackson County Economic Alliance meeting for Don. Um, what I have for business today, the first thing I have is an appointment to the Historic Preservation Commission. As you know, they've been pretty decimated out of a possible twelve members. They've been less than less than, I think, six. They don't even have a forum at this point, so, um, we have had an application from Judy Kuhn. And they are willing to have you appoint her to a term that would expire on December thirty-first, twenty twenty-five. I'm looking for a motion to appoint Judy Kuhn.
Normally two-year terms or?
She's filling a vacancy. And it's a vacancy that's been there for a couple of years, so I'm filling the farthest back ones first as we get applicants.
So moved.
Motion, second to appoint uh Judy to the Historic Preservation Commission. The term expiring twelve thirty-one and twenty-five. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, nay? Motion carried.
And I have on here a business to discuss the the Penrose um, in jail retaining well unless you want to save that conversation for her work session.
Oh, I don't know. I mean, we talked about it last week, and I understand that, um, was there an injury or do we have an injury or something? There's somebody was jumping over the wall or or coming off the wall?
I believe somebody stepped off the wall and twisted an ankle.
Well, I guess we talked about at least sending a letter to, are you aware of this, Brent? I mean, I see you're in the position, so, I mean.
I meant, where is somebody stepping off the wall or the notice about? Step off.
Okay, yeah, well, bold, good.
Both I heard about both.
Okay.
Yeah.
So I'm sure that you've discussed it with your personnel or the jail personnel, whoever, but I guess.
Yeah, I was kind of waiting for the notice to come out for it to be official and then probably.
I mean, I guess I don't feel that we need to put up a fence on that little short retaining wall. I mean, we shouldn't be walking the sidewalk or a walkway or something, I guess, so.
Yeah. Back in the day, I requested a permission to put a set of steps there, but couldn't get it done so that they could walk straight through there.
Okay, so is there anything, is there a sidewalk leading to there?
No.
Okay, well, then it should be.
It's driveway.
It's kind of a gravel spot.
Yeah, I mean, I put gravel down so they wouldn't walk in the mud. I put a load of gravel there.
Ideally, that would be, I guess, my recommendation of where to use versus going off the wall because there's no handrail or nothing to.
The gravel's at the end of the retaining wall? Yes. To the south of it, yes. And the door that they're going in or where they're going into? I, I don't know who fell off.
Basically, what they do is they they park over at the Penrose House. The gravel might be just a slight shade symbol from where they park, so they, a couple steps to the south, and they walk down the alley and walk down the alley to the front door of the sheriff's office.
Yeah.
Easy enough.
Okay, well, let's discuss it with personnel. We'll send a letter out, and I think we'll go from there.
That was all I had for you.
Okay. Do, we don't need, do we need action to send a letter out?
Be careful when you're walking.
Right. Here's a workplace.
We'll send a letter out, personnel, it's an internal.
Do we need to have a safety class on how to jump off of the table room?
Repel.
But anyway.
All right, thank you. Uh, Marty, are you available?
Yes, I am. Good morning.
Morning.
Um, just, not much to report, just a few things. Um, the drinking fountain, the electric guy on it somehow got cracked, so I replaced that, got it working. Took the snow equipment off, hopefully for the last time, brought the lawnmowers. We stored the lawnmowers up the care facility during the winter and I brought them all back and then take the. And I brought them all back and then take the snow stuff up there, uh, got that done. Uh, the handrail out here by the dumpster is rusted off, so I am repairing that along with the one to the west door. It turned the heat off, or we turned the heat off last week, I went to turn the air on this morning and it wouldn't come back online. So I called air control, they're the ones that work on it. Um, it's a fairly new unit, but we've been having a lot of problems with it. Down at the fairgrounds. Somebody keeps driving from Grove Street. Through the buildings. Between the senior citizen operation of view. I don't know if it's a big concern, but I would just always wonder if what would happen if somebody gets hit, I. Talked to this Frank several times, and they put telephone poles around there. This guy is ambitious, cuz he got out, moved the telephone pole and then drove through it. And.
Coming from where?
Uh, I think it's Grove Street from the north. Where the, where you come into the softball field, there, they come from there. And he got out, moved the telephone pole to like a twelve or fifteen foot telephone pole, go through there, go through in between the building.
Are they just laying there, or there's something, you have to move when they mow, or somebody has to move when they mow, or?
I think they just mow around them and we eat around it, they're they're movable, cuz this guy moved that one, Mike. Uh, back in the day, Roger, they were down further, they were driving through the post, so Roger put a sign there. You know, to keep them, then they just move up, and then I got a hold of Frank, and Frank put, uh. Big telephone pole there, but this guy, he wants to go through there because he got out and moved it.
You're pretty sure it's a guy, or?
Well, I I don't know.
You know, move the poles, let's not, but.
How many, we've been dealing with this for three or four years. And it it just, they got, a couple of years ago, they had a beat path going through there.
So, uh, is it trespassing, is that what's saying somebody's breaking the law here, or what's the case, I mean, or they do? So do we have surveillance, uh, equipment that would be available to monitor, maybe?
We've been attempting to get that, and I don't know that it's been done yet.
I know, we talked about that several times, yeah.
Yeah, I don't know now if it's in our budget this year or not, so that's one of the things, uh. Investigators off the next, today, in the next two days, but that's one thing I wanna get on him about before the end of the year to see if we're gonna.
And there's nothing on the backside of that building or anything out there either for his cameras or?
Not, no, I'm gonna say no, or not that I'm aware.
But again, what are you looking for, is it illegal? Or is it just a concern? It would be better spent to fasten those poles to the ground, they are not movable.
I agree.
You know, but I mean, okay, you got pictures of somebody doing it, what, and then what?
Right, I agree.
I would say we talk to Frank, or you guys get together, figure out a way to make those not movable.
Just between me and you, I think it'd be better to come from you, cuz I don't have much success with Frank.
I'll talk to him.
Yeah, I think that would be better coming from you guys than me.
Okay.
So, I mean, I mean, yeah, if you can drill drill holes through them and stake them or something.
Put a post on each side, well, that, if you're gonna move them, you're gonna have to really lift them versus just.
It needs something that's fastened that they can't move.
So, I guess I'm not really familiar, if we do that, are they gonna go around them?
It would be pretty much impossible, because it's an L, and there's a chain length ends here, and then over on this side, there's posts with a cable through it.
Okay, so they can't go all the way down to the fairgrounds, or Together We Build and come in, wherever, wherever.
They wouldn't be able to get back out if we did the two sides.
Are we putting these posts, are these posts around where the senior building is, or are they up around where the baseball?
The line is between the park and the the county.
It's around the parking lot for the baseball or softball baseball complex. It's up on the north end of the property.
The the, where they put the poles.
Yes.
So that catches them before they come into the property.
Right.
Not travel all the way across the.
Well, what it does is, if we put that up there, then they can't get out in any other place, cuz it's all chain.
The city has nothing either up there for monitoring or cameras or anything.
I I can't answer that.
One time talked about putting something more, they had that RC part, but that would be over.
Well, I know they were talking about something, cuz they had some problems with the, there's a, the softball has a concession stand there that was broken into quite a bit.
But that would be over.
To the west, southwest.
Being a bathroom building, they maybe did something, but I think they just really reinforced the door and kind of squashed that, so.
Other than that, everything's good.
Cool.
Any questions? Have a great week.
Have we, uh, have we gotten any, um, further? On the attorney's office as far as the window and the door and the, we talked about updating security in that room?
From when the last time I talked to you, I did get Casey Cossel to come and look at that, we have got contacted three people. And none of them ever come back to us. So I got a hold of Casey Cossel, he looks at it, uh, and he said he'll get me a bid by the, or quote by the end of the weekend.
All right, and we determined that's not a bearing wall or something.
Yeah, I'm pretty sure it is a bearing wall, but he says the frame of the window, he thinks will support it. You know, the wall is like thirteen inches thick, and it's, I think it's. Concrete blocks, not versus a cinder block, it's tough, cuz we tried. Can't remember what we were doing in there, but we tried to get a hole through it, and it was tough. And I've been up, again, years ago, I've been up above there doing something, wiring lights or something, and I, that's why I think it's a. A bearing wall. You know, I I can't swear to it, but I'm ninety nine point nine percent.
Sure, window has a steel frame around it, if we put it in there or anything.
Yeah, yeah. And then when. Well, before we do it, we'll make sure it does that it'll hold and be secure, okay?
So, I mean, are we talking a certain size window, and we talked about two by four at one time, but that seems.
We talked by four by four, she would still like a four by four, but from checking out a little bit, the standard is three by three.
That sounds more viable to me.
Yeah.
What's the cost difference between them?
And we, I have no idea, we're gonna find that out when, you know.
You know, if there's, you know, several thousand dollars difference, okay, yeah, three by three, absolutely, if there's like a hundred bucks difference, again, a hundred bucks, you know.
But I'm, I think, and don't go in this, but I think it'll be more than that, because he wants bulletproof, bulletproof glass in there, and that stuff is. Very expensive, I do know that. Alright.
Well, let's see what we find out about it.
Alright. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, we'll move on to Linda.
We've kind of worked through my agenda today, because we do have a public hearing for the proposed FY twenty four budget. But this morning, I do need a motion to approve the minutes of the April fourth, twenty twenty three board proceedings, as written by Auditor Smith. And authorize publication in the official newspapers.
So moved.
I will second that.
Motion to second to approve the minutes of April fourth, twenty twenty three board proceeding, as written, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed nay, motion carried.
Motion needed to approve and authorize the auditor's office to issue warrants in the publication of the claims listing in the amount of three hundred and sixty three thousand, one hundred and thirty four dollars and ninety eight cents.
And note that there's almost two hundred thousand dollars in rock and gravel.
Actually, rock and gravel is about two thirty, and the engineer got all, all of this except for about sixty thousand. We are working on it.
Almost.
Second.
Motion to second, they approved the claims, uh, as presented, all those in favor say aye. Aye, opposed nay, motion carried.
Motion needed to accept and place on file the Veterans Affairs Commission meeting minutes for the March eighth, twenty twenty three meeting.
So moved.
Second.
Motion and a second to approve the Veterans Affairs Commission meeting minutes for March eighth, twenty twenty three. All those in favor say aye, aye, opposed nay, motion carried.
Moving all the way down to my agenda this morning, I did email you, um. An email from Jeff Lorenz from Cost Advisory Services, it's quite a lengthy, um, report, that's why I've got Shelley here. It is, uh, something that we do annually to try and recoup some of the federal money, um, so. I need a motion this morning to approve and authorize the chair signature on the certificate of cost allocation plan. For fiscal year twenty two with Cost Advisory Services to provide consulting service to recoup federal monies.
So moved.
Second.
A motion to second to authorize the chair's signature on the certificate of cost allocation plan. As presented, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed nay, motion carried.
Motion needed to approve the renewal of a special class C retail alcohol license with outdoor service to the Tabor Family Winery at thirty five seventy sixty seventh Street. Baldwin, effective April first, twenty twenty three through March thirty first, twenty twenty four.
So moved.
Second thought.
Have a motion and a second to approve a special class C retail alcohol license with outdoor service to the Tabor Winery as presented. All those in favor say aye, aye, opposed nay, motion carried.
And the rest of my agenda has to wait till ten o'clock.
Okay. Thank you. And let me see, uh. Okay, any other board or commission reports, I know we had a RTA meeting last week. That was contentious, very informational. They're having some issues with the new software program, of course, and it's been ongoing, um, we had legal vice airwade call session. So, uh, the report come from yesterday was that things seem to be on the up a little bit, um. Some of the issues they were having are getting rectified, so it's like, uh. When they rectify one, that another two go bad, so. Uh, it looks like they may be gaining ground on it now, so, uh, we appreciate their extra efforts there, and I see. Trying to think of her name, Gail, one of the patients, she's gone from the seventh to the seventy, reply to the email, bounce back.
Yeah.
No, uh, we appreciate their work at it, and, uh, we have, you know, good support from Delaware and Dubuque County on that also, so we appreciate that. Uh, does any other reports as far as? Um, I assume that the closing for the parking lot went. Uneventful?
Um, yes, because I did receive a deed back from them, it was recorded, so it's officially been filed and recorded, and.
So we still have ongoing talks with the city also as far as, um, how we're gonna design or set up that parking lot? Either removing barricades or. Striping? Is that correct?
Yeah, I talked to them, basically what they said last night is they would like to, I showed you that little club area, design. Um, talked to Todd about what it would take to remove those posts, because if they were. Whether they need to be cut off, because they're, he goes, if they're anchored in cement or whatever, then probably just cut them off, but. If they can just be slid out, um, which he thinks that could be the case, then it would be good to kind of patch those in, and then. Basically, we either kept the city a go ahead, and they said they'd resurface it.
There's one of the posts already missing, you know.
I I I guess, you know, going forward, maybe we should just have a work session with them, so we can discuss. All of our thoughts, maybe?
Mm-hmm.
That way that, I mean, we ain't just sitting here discussing between ourselves our thoughts that the city's there also, and. And I don't know if there's a few from the council, it doesn't have to be, um, action taken, we can discuss and.
I think we had Frank and Joe, um, Josh. Frank and Josh would be more, I'll talk to, I'll bring it up when I talk to Frank about the poles down at Burlingame.
Yeah, maybe one of our, after our meeting or something, we can walk across the street.
Yeah.
Yeah, be good discussion.
We also need to look at that hydrant that's sitting there that's been over.
Didn't realize there was a hydrant over there, is that functional?
Well, it's chained off, so we don't know, I don't know.
There used to be a building there, so.
Yeah, yeah, a drive-through, right? Yeah.
But there is a hydrant there that's chained off, but it looks like either. No, or a vehicle hit it, and it's bleeding, so we don't want it to be leaking water down there somewhere that.
Yeah, that figure out, we'll check into that, just know that they they, when they do the resurfacing, they would like the county to be responsible for whatever. Cost of doing our portion, that would be, and Todd didn't think that would be that big.
We certainly need to discuss that, yeah, so we just all get together. Good working terms, anyway, relationships, all that, we're gonna keep.
On the Green Space Committee, they are working with University of Iowa engineering students. To put up that permanent shelter. Big talk in the last meeting was whether it would be on the west end or the. North end.
North or east, I thought, actually.
Or north or east, sorry, east, yes. But it kind of sounds like it's leaning now towards the north end.
That would make the most sense.
That's kind of what I thought. We're talking like.
So we're still talking bathrooms on the southeast corner, too?
Bathrooms will be on the south end, and this is kind of like a three-tier project, where maybe initially they build the bathrooms. And the bathrooms would only be open, like, if there's an event going on downtown, they wouldn't be open twenty four seven type of deal. And then a three-tier project where maybe as they get more funding, they would do some seating up there. And then as they got more funding, they'd even install some type of shade structure on the top of that also. So. Yeah.
Well, they discussed that the key pocket trees and all this stuff.
And that was another thing they were talking about.
Fifteen feet of packed line.
Yep, yep.
Remember that.
They own, we talked about that, cuz I talked about planting trees, and I'm like, well, you're gonna get very. Wellstanding trees with the mole. Amount of ground there.
Hey, you're gonna grow, there's no, there's no water in it.
So. That's one of the reasons why they was going back to the. North end for this, cuz then they could, on their shelter, they could put down some type of drop-down shade for the veins.
Yeah.
Everything, and then maybe just use pop-up tents or whatever for the rest of them. Versus trees. That's all in the workplace.
Okay, any other reports or comments? Input? I guess at this point, we'll, we'll take a short recess. We will reconvene at this time. And we are scheduled to have a public hearing on the proposed fiscal year twenty twenty four budget. So I will open the public hearing and ask if there's any comments or concerns regarding our twenty twenty four budget. I have not had any calls personally regarding the budget. Um, Lisa, Charlie?
Had a few calls or conversations about the assessment of values and how it affects the budget and things like that, and. A little timeline, as people talk about their assessments going up, what's the increase in there, and it's like. The timing issue, the the assessment values don't really hit the tax rules for about eighteen months. Unfortunately, we have to handle things the way we do, and as far as the actual budget, I have not had anything.
Are you here for the budget, sir?
I am, okay.
You wanna come forward and state your name?
Sure.
Can I go slide over?
Guess I'm shocked that nobody else is concerned, like, know that nobody else is here to. Uh, my name is Charlie McCoy, I live on two seventeen street. Charlie? Uh, my concerns, and it kind of galls me every time I read this in the paper. That the tax levy has not gone up in eight or nine years. But that doesn't mean the tax rate, taxes that I'm paying haven't gone up in that period of time. So I I was concerned when you, when they cite, you know, it's gonna raise, you have a three hundred thousand dollar hole, it's gonna raise a hundred thirty three dollars or something. Well, in addition to that, everybody's assessment, I assume, is going up, as mine has gone, and I understand housing prices have gone up. And the assessed value goes up along with that. But when you combine the two, and the last time, two years ago. My taxes went up four hundred dollars. That's less. Increase in my assessment is greater this time than that. So I'm assuming in eighteen months, I'm gonna get hit with probably a six or eight hundred hour increase. So if you're gonna tack on another hundred and thirty three dollars with the tax levy. We're talking a lot of money. So.
Well, as far as the tax assessment goes, what you knew assessment that you got is based on fair market value. It has really nothing to do with. It has really nothing to do with what your tax at, your, your taxation for the budget. Is based on what we need for this, for spending. For finances to, to operate. Um, all our departments, be it secondary roads, law enforcement. Um, the courthouse, um, so that's what your tax is based on, and, and if I know the legislation correct to the law somewhat. We are regulated by the amount that we can grow in taxation in any given year is limited to three percent of one.
There's been a lot of discussion this year at the state legislature as far as allowing growth and, and how they're gonna cap things for the counties, it's. It's still not a hundred percent. Um, you know, it's, but it's being debated.
So your rollback is definitely going to change. And your, uh, levy will probably change also, so it's, it's like this. I look at it, uh, my assessment went up thirty percent. Well, I don't know what the average would be, but I'm gonna just say. Somewhere in that range, twenty-five percent, so if our tax asking, I'm gonna use round numbers. And somebody correct me, stop me if I get out, if our tax asking is ten million dollars in taxable revenue for the county. I just can't raise that twenty-five percent and tax twelve point five million, again, that's not, that's not feasible for me. What am I gonna do with another two and a half million dollars, that's not in my budget. We keep the, we look at every budget line and say, well, we don't need this, this is a want, we don't, we don't need it, it's a want. So, I mean, we, we go through every line item in the budget, and what we, our tax casting is, is based on our budget.
And the increases that we're doing, the, the proposed increase of forty-four point four oh five cents. That we're asking for this year is mainly because of three reasons. Um, the state screwed up the rollback, we had an increase of about a hundred thousand dollars in assessments, I was just gonna bring it, we left everything alone. The county was gonna take in roughly about a hundred thousand dollars extra. The state took that back when they miscalculated the rollback of that a hundred and twenty-four million dollars that was in the paper. Um, insurance. Just health insurance. Ate a fair part of that, then we put about three hundred and seven thousand dollars extra into the gravel budget. Because we were having such a hard time, uh, with the gravel roads over the spring, we're trying to go through and re crown them, and that's a program, so those are the cause for. Yeah, and the county, that forty-four cent increase, that's where all of that basically is going towards.
Uh, two questions, one is. Fair market value, I mean, they're not looking at every piece of property. Do they have a set?
They're looking at every piece of property that's sold, yes.
So they, they look at that, plus they have a book that they go buy, so they do like your square footage. And stuff like that.
So it's, it is.
It's a calculated formula from the state, the state kind of sets guidelines, and part of their guidelines are. If we don't think you, if you're within five percent of what they deemed that property to be valued at. They will come through and equal, issue a, uh, equalization order, and then everybody blanket. They just say everybody in Jackson County's taxes or assessments will go up. So much percent. And so the reason they fluctuate with. The problem we're having right now, the reason everybody got such big increases is because you go back about. One and a half to three and a half years ago, you're in the COVID where nobody could afford to build. So everybody tried to buy existing because the cost to build was so outrageous, plywood was a hundred bucks a sheet. Well, when there's a limited supply of houses and everybody was trying to buy. Prices shot astronomically. And now that's kind of in the window that they look at, and. So right now you're seeing, you had really low income, interest rates. You have a high demand, it was just kind of a perfect storm. Unfortunate circumstances.
Yeah, so I don't want to take any more of your time, but I'm always concerned that. About the system that, you know, what it's based upon as far as. And I bring this up because I have another parcel that has an old shed on it.
Mm-hmm.
I cannot insure the shed because I had a fire at one time. The roof is, part of the roof is burned. The assessed value went on, okay, it doesn't sound like much, but it was, previously it was assessed for sixty-nine hundred dollars.
The land?
No, just the, the building, the building, the shed, sixty-nine hundred dollars. Doesn't sound like much, but it's a, it's an. Old shed. Well, the assessed value of that went up thirty-two hundred dollars.
So I would certainly contest something like that, I mean, the fact that it matters, if it's not functional is one thing, but if it's based on the land and the building.
No, I'm, I'm taking it, I'm taking that out of it, the land is assessed for much more than that.
Sure, no, that's something, actually, it, uh, the assessor's office is right next door, and they're more than happy to.
You know, I'll talk to Buck again, I've done, I've been in front of the, the board before, you know, as far as. My concerns, but.
Sure.
I'm just always.
No, we have no control over that aspect. We can only, and, uh, part, my job here, uh, they are here is, we take in as minimum. The minimum of what we need to function with the county and have, you always like to have like twenty percent in reserves, just in, you know, about three months operating capital. Um. If we, if it looks like we're taking it too much, those will be adjusted, as much as they can adjust up, they adjust down, so we can look at that in the future.
Yeah, I, I've just never seen mine go down.
Well.
You know, I'm sorry, but.
Actually, my tax gap gone down in different times, I mean, I mean, over the years, if you follow it. I mean, and then again, look at your tax assessment. Where your taxes are going to, the percentage of a hundred percent. Where, where is it going to, so seven percent of a hundred percent is going to secondary road. Fifty-two percent odd round number going to your public school.
Depending on where you live, yeah.
Well, thank you.
Yeah. Thanks for stopping, Charlie.
Yeah, I was gonna talk to him again.
Yeah.
Um, anyone else, uh, online or here? That wanna comment or have concerns regarding, um, the budget?
Motion to close the public hearing.
I'll second that.
Have a motion, second to close the public hearing, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed nay. Motion carried. We have discussed a possible action on the proposed fiscal year twenty twenty-four budget. Um, any explanation that you want to?
Um, my next thing on the, is the, um, compensation board, I, did you receive in your packet today? Um. The minutes and notes from the compensation board?
Yeah.
Okay. So I need a motion to accept and place on file the compensation board's recommended elective officials' compensation schedule for fiscal year twenty-three, twenty-four.
This is just putting it on file, correct?
Uh, yeah, it's all we need to do is we need to, excuse me, we need to, um. Receive it and file it.
So moved.
Second thought.
Have a motion and a second to. Put on file the county compensation board's recommendations, right? Compensation, compensation schedule for elected officials. All those in favor say aye. Aye, opposed nay. Motion carried.
So since you now have accepted a compensation board's schedule. I need a motion to approve resolution number nine fifty-five dash zero four dash eleven dash twenty twenty-three. Certifying the Board of Supervisors approved salaries for all elected officials received from the compensation board's recommendation for fiscal year twenty-three, twenty-four.
So, uh, a brief discussion on that, maybe, um, so it was recommended from the compensation board. Uh, that the elected official. Receive a six percent COLA. Increase. And that, uh. Elected officials, whether it be honors or treasury reporter, attorney, sheriff, supervisors. Um, receive a one-time stipend to get them in the parameters of the state level. Um, where we're, where we should be. And this is a one-time. Offering. So that includes that stipend. And the six percent COLA. Any other comments?
I'll make a motion, we approve that resolution.
Third. Have a motion and a second to approve resolution nine five five dash zero four dash one one dash twenty twenty-three. Um. As presented, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed nay. Motion carried.
Moving on to our next resolution, which is resolution number nine fifty-six, I need a motion to approve, not resolution nine fifty-six dash zero four dash eleven dash twenty twenty-three. Adopting the proposed Jackson County budget as published for fiscal year starting July first, twenty twenty-three. And ending on June thirtieth, twenty twenty-four, including the compensation board's salary recommendation. As submitted and filed.
So moved.
I'll second that.
Have a motion and a second to approve resolution nine, resolution nine fifty-six dash zero four. Dash one one dash twenty twenty-three. Adopting a proposed Jackson County budget as published, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed nay. Motion carried.
And to finalize, if anybody else has any questions, or Kelly, do you have anything concerning the budget that you wanna bring out? Did you do the adoption of, that's next, that's why I was gonna have a discussion, if, if nobody's. Needs to have a discussion about the budget, I think Don, you just did a good. Um, overview of where the money is going, you know, I mean, I commend you guys for looking at every line item and making sure that. It's a need in Jackson County. And that you're putting a significant amount of money in our little roads. And of course, we are just like everybody else, we have seen a significant increase in our property and category insurance, and we give an increase, of course, for health insurance. So, um.
And thank the Lord for ARPA funds.
Yeah.
L A T C, yeah.
Yeah, that's helping us out, the money that we've received for our ARPA funds, our American Rescue Plan is helping us. With the construction cost for the jail and. This is L A T C, which is kind of a local tribal, it's another thing that we have received, that money, of course, is what you've used to buy equipment for the secondary roads department. So if nobody has any further, uh, discussion or questions. Then I would need a motion to approve and authorize the chair's signature on the adoption of the budget and certification of taxes for fiscal year July first, twenty twenty-three. Through June thirtieth, twenty twenty-four, and direct auditor. Smith to file all required forms with the I R Department of Management as required by law. So moved.
Second.
Have a motion and a second to approve the authorized, authorizing the chair to sign the adoption of the budget and certificate of taxes for fiscal year twenty-three to. June thirtieth to twenty-four, as presented, is there any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed nay. Motion carries.
When we were gonna second the line, we know that L A T C.
I don't know, we haven't even, we haven't even, um. Got any email as far as when the second tranche is coming, we didn't receive the first one until December, so I don't know if they'll be in this fiscal year or next, I don't know.
So I would just like to thank every, all of you and Lisa, your staff for. Your dedication and, and diligence in putting this budget together, it has been. Um, it has been trying, uh, through the times that we think we are at this point. And legislation passes, and then we. Took a couple steps backwards and, and redid it again, so again, I want to thank your staff and what you did, and. Then, and Don for their input in the, in the budget, it's a, uh, process, so it's.
Thank you guys.
It's a, it's a, it's a lesson, um, to all of us every year, it's a little different, but it's a. It's a process, and it's one of the. Times of the year that we really. Put your. Test your stress level, so. Thank you for that.
Thank you for your words, yeah, thank you.
Much appreciated.
Okay, um, are we back to our agenda? So.
Now, public hearing for the budget amendment.
So we had discussion, and we did on the proposed twenty-four budget, we did that, correct? In the last resolution, right, the signature?
So we're actually down to G on my agenda.
Good.
Uh, we will open the public hearing. For the budget amendment, for the twenty fiscal year twenty twenty-three budget amendment.
I've not received any comments.
I have not received any comments. Could you briefly explain the amendment?
Um, we. Have to increase the medical examiner, uh, C P's again, we've already done that once. Um. General assistance, we had to increase, um, apparently, we are having more funeral expenses than funerals than normal. Um. We're budgeting, we're amending for the L A T C F funds. Uh, the courthouse and the LA, the law enforcement center electrical wiring. Um. And insurance. And audit expenses, insurance increase. Quite a. Um, the. Not the health insurance, the county insurance. And then, um, on the revenue side. Uh, amending for the L A T C F funds in the, oh, in the sheriff's, virtual, um, grant dollars. Um, that they actually received, so. So. And increase the. Uh, revenue that we're getting for the farm. And the welcome center and the sale of the welcome center, and then the opioid birds that we're getting.
Motion to close the public hearing, there's no other comments.
Second thought.
Have a motion and a second to close the public hearing, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed nay. Motion carried.
So with the closing of the public hearing, I would need a motion to approve a resolution number nine fifty-seven dash zero four dash eleven dash twenty twenty-three. For the amendment to the county budget for fiscal year twenty-two, twenty-three. And authorize the chair and auditor's signatures on the record of hearing and certified to the state of Iowa.
Any questions?
So moved.
One second.
Have a motion and second to approve resolution nine fifty-seven dash zero four dash one one dash twenty twenty-three. Um, as presented, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed nay. Motion carries.
And it's all that I have to the board today.
That was quick.
Mm-hmm.
Did you get it all covered, are we all covered up and now all done? Okay.
And you can, then I will look at them.
We're happy, Roddy?
Yes, please, thank you.
We appreciate everybody's hard work again, so.
Does that come up? And then he wants to know the, the number of the, the financial, the, yeah, numbers, money numbers. If I could not dismiss it, but. Let me get your.
That's fine.
This one, so you can have.
Excuse me, there, I thought there was one there.
There any other business before the board this morning?
Motion is heard.
One second.
Have a motion and a second to adjourn, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed nay. Motion carried, meaning adjourn, thank you.